Good evening and welcome to Speedway Town Council Meeting. I call the second meeting for July, July 22, 2019, to order at 7:00 PM. My name is Irene Fisher. I'm President of Speedway Town Council. Others in attendance this evening, to my right, we have Councillor David Lindsay.
Good evening.
I have Vice President Jeff Matthews.
Good evening.
To my left, I have Councillor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
I have Councillor Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
Town Manager Jacob Bleedstall.
Good evening.
Clerk Treasurer Monte Combs.
Good evening.
And Attorney Bob Clitter.
Howdy do.
This time, if everyone would stand, we'll say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes from our July 8, 2019, meeting. Any corrections or changes on those minutes? Seeing none, those minutes have been approved. Next is the approval of the resolution of 2019-11. This is a resolution between the Town Council of Speedway approving a lease between Speedway Redevelopment Authority as well as Speedway Redevelopment Commission on the lease and rentals of bonds.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is, of course, related to the Town Hall and Police Department project, 5300 Crawfordsville. When the process kicked off with a meeting with the Redevelopment Commission, I gave kind of an overview presentation of the project and what we're doing and some of the benefits and the whys and that kind of thing. I won't give the presentation again. If anybody wants to see it, it's on YouTube and was also covered in the Westside Town Messenger and Speedway Town Talk. But to give kind of some brief overview, discussing some of the benefits and efficiencies of being under one roof, both in terms of to the public from a customer service perspective as well as to employees working together and not driving between buildings and that kind of thing. Certainly another benefit of the improved facilities for our police department and, of course, picking up public meeting space that we don't currently have in the community. And also talked about some of the benefits of the location of that area and some of the costs being lower than what it would to build a similar building of that size, certainly with current construction costs. I didn't really talk much about kind of our current facilities in general and just, as I think everybody knows, you know, my office is in the annex that we're leasing in the mall area. This town hall serves the community whilst going back to the 1940s, but certainly isn't large enough and doesn't have the space that we're looking for. And then, of course, our police department, they've been doing a fantastic job of working with what they've had as far as putting Band-Aids on the facility and trying to make do and finding ways to also maintain compliance with CLIA, and they've done an incredibly good job with that. But kind of all those conversations and those reasons have gotten us to this point. I will point out that I mentioned the initial Redevelopment Commission meeting that I gave a presentation at. That was followed by a Public Redevelopment Authority meeting, which then went back to the Redevelopment Commission for another public meeting. This is the fourth meeting to talk about this topic. And then, if approved tonight by council, it will go back to the Redevelopment Authority to get more specific into some of the financing documents. And then after that, still not done, it will go back to the Redevelopment Commission for another public meeting for their approval. So that's kind of some description about the project and the process as far as where we've been, where we are tonight, and where we're going. I'll ask Heather James, who's our attorney with Ice Miller, who's been working with us on this, to kind of speak more to the legal aspect of what we're doing and the financing structure and the resolution that's in front of you for approval tonight.
Thank you, Jacob. So I'm Heather James, a partner in the bond group at Ice Miller, bond counsel to the town. Appreciate you having me this evening. So the resolution before you this evening is a pretty short and sweet one, but it accomplishes several things. It approves the issuance of the bonds with maximum parameters that were provided by the town's financial or municipal advisor, Baker Tilly. It ratifies the execution of the lease between the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Commission and approves those parties entering into that lease. It approves the execution of the bond documents by the Redevelopment Authority, namely the trust indenture, which is the contract between the town body and the bond trustee. And the main crux of that document is that it lays out all of the flow of funds available for the project and all of the tax covenants. And then the resolution before you this evening also approves the transfer of land. So Jacob did a great job of describing what we've done so far and what we're planning to do. Just to be clear, we are financing the acquisition of and lease of certain roads from the Redevelopment Authority to the Redevelopment Commission. And then those acquisition proceeds will be used to fund the Town Hall Police Station project. And it is structured that way to avoid a large amount of capitalized interest. Otherwise, we'd be paying capitalized interest during a construction phase of a project, and that's just maybe not the best use of your funds. And again, we are using a lease structure that is frequently utilized statewide. Pretty much any K through 12 school financing that's done in the state of Indiana is done as a lease because the Supreme Court ruled that if it's a lease, it is not debt. So that's why it's structured as a lease financing. And we're doing this under the Redevelopment Authority and Redevelopment Commission statute instead of 36-110, which is the statute you might typically see for a town lease because you are not able to lease roads under 36-110. And the Redevelopment statute just provides more flexibility. So as Jacob mentioned, this is the approval. This is the one time that we come before the council for approval for this sort of financing and then back to both the Redevelopment Commission and the Redevelopment Authority at their August meetings. And assuming everything is passed, then we look to close in late September. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the resolution, the lease, any of the bond documents, process.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2019-11 as presented this evening.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second for the approval of 2019-11. At this time, we'll take any public comments. Seeing no public comments, any questions from the councillors? Seeing no questions from the councillors, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2019-11, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, approve 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next is the determination to act as a hearing examiner and setting hearing dates.
Good evening, council. As you're aware, we've been working diligently towards the redevelopment of 2500 High School Road to take a underutilized area of town and make it productive. As we've been working through that, all the different steps, we've come to realize that we needed to do a rezone of that property based on the potential uses that might be going out there as well as different variances that are going to be needed from the overall metropolitan code such as setbacks and some tightening up of signage and different things as well. So we have hired Clark Quinn as a consultant to work on our rezone for us. And then we're getting ready to start that process. As part of that process, we had some options on how we wanted to go through that. One of those is by setting the hearing examiner, who will actually hear the rezoning. And we are requesting that the Town Council actually acts as the hearing examiner for this rezoning case and then also to set the hearing date this evening. Probably not doing the best job explaining all this, so I'm gonna, we have our consultant from Clark Quinn, Elizabeth Williams, here, who might want to step up and explain the process a little bit better.
Good evening. My name's Elizabeth Vince Williams. I'm a land use planner with Clark Quinn. And we've been working closely with TEM and other representatives of the town to create a rezoning petition. And it's unusual, when we get into the merits of this, when you actually hear the case, the property is currently zoned CS, which is commercial special, and we're rezoning it to CS, commercial special. But we are changing the uses. We are adding details in terms of prohibited uses and looking at the site plan and what we need to do to that, which also, as TEM mentioned, includes a set of variances that we'll be filing before the Board of Zoning Appeals. Because of Speedway being one of the excluded cities, the rules of procedure for the Metropolitan Development Commission and what has been passed by the state legislature allows for an excluded city to sit as the hearing examiner. And you have to do that at your first regularly scheduled meeting after we file. We filed on Friday. We made the staff aware that we were coming out here to ask for this this evening. And then if you set your hearing for your first hearing in August, we will tomorrow get the notices out and a part of the request, let me just go ahead to that, would be also for you to approve a reduction in the notice time. The state law only allows a 10, only requires a 10-day notice, but the rules of procedure require a 23-day notice. In order to meet our timelines with your meetings, we'll be giving a 20-day notice. So that's the three parts of the motion are for you to sit as hearing examiner, set the date of the meeting for August 12, and then reduce our required notice time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or any further details, but we will do all of that when we present the decision. Thank you.
Couple of questions, maybe this one directed at our attorney. Going to, from 10, the difference between state law and more local laws, 23, going to 20, is that sufficient for us to be able to have the right checks internally and externally as we?
Yes, absolutely. As Elizabeth mentioned, state law for any type of a rezoning or variance or anything requiring notice to the public and surrounding property owners only requires 10 days, relatively short time span, but nonetheless, that's what state law requires. A lot of individual jurisdictions set different days. You know, one county may be 20 days, another might be 30, a city may be 15, but 10 days is the minimum. The rules of the Metropolitan Development Commission require 23. So you can shorten that timeframe, you just can't go below 10 days, of course. It's very common that a petitioner will request a little bit shorter time period because otherwise you'd have to have a special meeting to meet that 23-day timeframe. So it's quite common that a petitioner, in this case, the petitioner is the town, will require or will request a shortening of the timeframe from 23 days. You just can't go below 10.
Okay. Second question I had, and Elizabeth, you might answer this, or Tim might. You said there are some changes, some things we're maybe trying to make sure don't get put into the property. What are some of those types of properties or businesses that we want to try and prevent?
We've come up with and will present the entire list to you next month. Let me take a look at it here. A whole table of uses. We started with making sure we added the uses that we anticipate being either planned or possibility that would be a positive. That included adding hospital and medical facility as well as an automobile car wash. Some of the prohibited uses that weren't in the other rezoning petition, because it did have a prohibited use, include things like CBD sales, things that are more short-term tenant-type uses like alternative finance places, refund anticipation places, check cashing, pawn shops, those types of things.
Thank you.
I have one, I guess it's a commoner question, probably for Tim. I think it's before you were with us, Tim, but we, the council has done this before. And this goes to us and not our zoning board because?
Yeah, the reason for that is it is a rezoning. So you have, Speedway has a Board of Zoning Appeals that will hear variances, but this is a rezoning, so it goes to you and then ultimately down to the MDC for approval.
Okay. And we've heard this before, not this area before, but something similar.
Yes, you have sat as hearing examiner before. Not recently, but it's been a few years, but it's not uncommon.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, I move to determine that Speedway Town Council act as hearing examiner for the rezoning request for the property located at 2500 High School Road, also known as Founder Square, and that we set the hearing date for our next Town Council meeting, the date of August 12, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall chambers located at 1405 Lynn Hurst Drive, Speedway, Indiana 46224. I further move that as hearing examiner, we reduce the required 23-day notice to 20 days to accommodate the August 12 meeting date.
Second.
Okay, the first.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a first and a second for the action as hearing examiner. At this time, we'll take any public comments. Seeing none, questions for councillors?
Correction on the address, it's 1450.
Sorry. I was in a hurry.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments?
It's part of what I do.
Thank you.
All right, with that said, with that, we'll take a vote for approval with that one correction of our location here for Town Hall at 1450. All those in favor of the determination of the action of hearing and hearing dates, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, approved 5-0. Next is the consideration to support the intersection improvements at 25th Street and High School Road.
All right. Continuing the progress and the different steps that are required to have that redevelopment, part of this new development also solves an existing problem, which is an F intersection at 25th and High School. It is contemplated that part of the infrastructure improvements will put a stoplight at 25th and High School with dedicated turn lanes into the new development as well as a southbound dedicated turn lane on 25th. And then, so that being a road that is under the jurisdiction of Indianapolis, we have to, there's a formal process that allows us to move forward with these improvements. We're just simply requesting them to do the improvements on their road. So we need council support of the infrastructure improvements to be able to start that process, which would go to a committee at the Department of Public Works that then would make a recommendation to the City County Council for approval of these infrastructure improvements as part of this project. We are simply asking City County Council for approval to move forward with these improvements of the signalized intersection. I can get in a little more detail on that, but simply it'll sync up to the intersection that is at High School and Crawfordsville Road. They will be, they will talk to each other to make sure that the timing's as good as it can possibly be. As I mentioned, there will be dedicated turn lanes and this will allow the backups at 25th to have a chance to get out either south or northbound on High School as well. So it'll take an intersection that's currently failing and bring it up to hopefully a Service Level A, but somewhere between A or B at the initial volumes.
So question here, are we looking for a motion? Are we looking for just concurrence on this?
You can do a motion. I have to be able to send something down that shows that there's support from the Town Council, so it can be a motion, it could be concurrence.
I recommend a motion, so the minutes reflect.
I move that we approve support of the council for the intersection improvements as presented at 25th and High School Road.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second for the approval of the inner, improvements of the intersection at 25th and High School. Questions from public? Seeing none, any questions from councillors?
Not a question, just a statement. I used to live in Meadowwood up to 25 years ago and have lived south of that area since then, but this was needed 25-plus years ago, so I'm excited that this will relieve a lot of stress on the residents in that area that try to enter and exit 25th Street on High School.
I'd like to comment as well. Tim and I have spoke several times about this at length. This is in my district, and I will be the first to admit, when Tim first brought this to me, I was not for it. I had a lot of questions, which Tim has answered, the engineers have answered. However, Tim, I'd like to see if we could put some kind of forum together for the public. I think not only the whole town, but the residents in my area that this affects would like to see the plans, if you could arrange that. I think that would be very beneficial to go over that, maybe have the engineers there to discuss it. Is that something we could work out that?
Yeah, we absolutely can do that, just to kind of relay timing. So this is kind of the start of the approval to allow us to do this. We don't anticipate actually doing these improvements until spring of 2020, just to coordinate with some other projects. So we'll have plenty of time to put that together, and we'd be happy to bring some renderings and get, you know, some public awareness of what we're proposing in this area. Most likely, we tend to hold those at the library meeting room, and we could set that up for sometime either the next few months or this fall.
And you said 25th and High School is an F intersection now?
It's been an F intersection for quite some time.
And this moves it up to?
We have to recalculate with, I'd like to say it was an A. Our original estimate was an A. However, until we know the exact uses in the new developments, that could, we'll have to recalculate it based on what kind of traffic's being generated in the development of 2500. So that's why I'm a little wishy-washy on saying A or B, because until we know exactly what the tenants are and the traffic counts are coming out of 2500, we won't know exactly what the intersection will be, but we're working towards that.
That also gives us the opportunity to make slight adjustments to the current plans, correct?
Correct. Correct. There's, we actually met with a traffic engineer recently and had some recommendations as well for ways we can work through traffic, help ease traffic concerns, again, depending on what the final tenants are in the redevelopment.
Tim, are you going to post what you've provided the council on a website or something?
We're still working on final design, so we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves. But yes, we will obviously put up the designs and we'll work with Kelly Buck, our Communications Director, when we get a little closer to the final designs for what we're planning. So it won't change much from what you have in front of you, but we want to make sure, and that's probably what we'll use for the Department of Public Works. But when we met with Department of Public Works to make sure that they were somewhat in favor of what we're asking, they had a few recommendations as well on changes they like to see, extending the turn lanes to help have a few extra cars off to the side so you don't turn into them. We haven't incorporated those last few comments yet, so as soon as that gets done, I was hoping it'd be done for this evening, but we can get that posted then.
Okay. And then, as we have had these different meetings with the engineers and stuff, there's talk about some changes at the Crawfordsville Road and High School intersection. Is that all going to be done at the same time when this intersection is done? Or we know we've had some changes down there, but?
One of the concerns was, you know, they had changed the dedicated turn lane going westbound on Crawfordsville Road into a straight and turn lane. And we won't name any names, but it has been some concern. And, but, and it has, I sit in that traffic as well, and I know others do as well. So they thought they were doing a good thing, and it has improved traffic going straight, but it's also caused some other issues. So we, one of the requests was to look at, before we do this 25th and High School, obviously you don't want to create problems in another intersection. So we went back and looked at options there, and we're able to adjust those lanes with additional rideaway to create three straight lanes and then also put a dedicated right-hand turn lane back in. So we're working with Indianapolis on that as well. When we met with them, they indicated that they'd be able to restripe that as part of their 16th Street repayment project that's currently underway and that that would probably happen towards the end of the project, most likely in September, October is what they're quoting. So we think that we'll be able to have that done on, through Indianapolis by the end of the year, and that will create three straight lanes. Left-hand turn will stay as is, and then we'll have a dedicated right-hand turn lane.
Any other questions?
So we're good for a public forum?
Yes, we will get that arranged, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, all those in favor then of supporting the improvements of the 25th and High School intersection, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, approved 5-0. Next is the consideration to support the infrastructure improvements to the north side of 16th Street between Cord and Main Street. Tim?
Thank you. It's a very similar process. We're doing the same request down to DPW a while back. It was requested with the improvements at USAC and potential improvements at the Bunch Building to take a look at infrastructure to kind of wrap the Main Street feel down 16th Street a little bit on the north side. We started digging into that a little bit. Same situation, though, that is Indianapolis Road, so we're going to need to ask Department of Public Works for their approval to allow us to do these infrastructure improvements. I will say that, you know, the scope has kind of, you know, as we look at it, we want to do it right if we're going to do it. We see some opportunities to make that intersection a little bit safer, to possibly slow traffic down through there and add some parking. So we have not, we've gone through concept stage, we've talked to USAC, we've talked to the Bunch, Mr. Bunch, John Bunch, and have some concepts in place. Our next step would be going to engineering to see what the cost would be as well as the final design. So we're looking to start the approval process to make sure we have the go-ahead with Indianapolis with the understanding that we still have a pretty long road ahead of us before we do any actual improvements there. So again, it's mostly improving some safety and some beautification along there to kind of bring the Main Street feel a little bit to the north and kind of tie it in with Main Street along that business corridor there. So it'd be, the improvements would be from Main Street to Cord Street with sidewalk improvements as well as additional parking added and some streetscaping.
I move that we support the infrastructure improvements to the north side of 16th Street between Cord and Main Street.
Second.
Okay, the first and a second. At this time, we'll take public comments. Seeing no public comments, any questions from councillors?
Just a thank you. I think this is, just continues to beautify the area, but the safety issue is real. You know, we have USAC, which has invested a lot of money in their building, and this just goes alongside that as well as makes it safer. I, for one, use the FedEx or the UPS boxes right there, and it's not always the safest feeling when you park on the street.
Do not remove the FedEx and UPS box.
I didn't say that. But thank you for the safety improvements.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the infrastructure on north side of 16th Street between Cord and Main Street, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, approved 5-0. Next are claims and adjustments. Monte?
Thank you. I've submitted to the council the claims for the period of July the 6th through July 19th. And I'd call it, as I usually call it, business as usual and an appreciated approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve claims dated July 6 through July 19th as presented.
Second.
I have a first and a second for the approval of claims. Any public comments? Seeing none, any questions from councillors? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the claims? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the claims, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, claims approved 5-0. Any text adjustments?
Yes, actually, same period of time, July 6 through July 19. I would say utility adjustments, but it's actually utility adjustment, so approval would be helpful, too.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the utility adjustment. It's presented by Clark Treacher.
Second.
I have a first and a second on the utility adjustment. Any public comments? Seeing none, any questions from councilors on that one adjustment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, your adjustment is approved 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Anything else for us, Monti?
No.
Thank you. Next is a report from town manager, Jacob.
Madam President, only item I have is going to be a recurring item until we get it approved. We continue to work with FEMA on approving the Dry Run Ditch project and getting the new maps approved. We're in constant communication with our consultant. They're frequently communicating with not just FEMA, but this is also involves the state and the county as far as stormwater management. We continue to push on it. Counsel Rakes and I had a conversation with representative from Senator Todd Young's office as far as inquiring with FEMA, and they're very supportive and understood our concerns, as well as frustrations in getting this to a timely approval. So just know that we're working on it, and like I said, I'm going to be providing this as an update every council meeting until we get it to approval. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Next, we'll have reports from councilors. Start with David Lindsay.
Nothing further to report this evening.
Thank you, David. Counselor Jason Delisle.
Nothing for me.
Counselor Gary Rakes.
Nothing to report this evening.
Vice President Jeff Matthews.
The only thing that I have to report is ongoing talks with Brixmore Management Company with the Speedway Supercenter. They are aware of a few of, the last few weeks, there were a couple incidents that they are very much aware of. Management is meeting in Chicago this week, and I am, I'm confident, and I've been told that we'll be getting some information later this week. And like Jacob, I will continue to support and report this until we get it fixed. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Last is a report for myself, and I have nothing this evening, so I adjourn the meeting at 7:30.